...on this topic of this day, which is All Saints' Day yesterday, it pays on Soul Day, we're commemorating the future saints and that quite their other way. When Dusty asked to show me the options for when to maybe give this lecture, well, it's probably worked out the best for me. I had no intention, I wasn't thinking of anything on the saints at all, but then he finally sent me an email saying they need a topic. So, okay, I think of something. I've been working on this lots, I could have, you'll be at this lecture here this evening for a number of years, just kept thinking about it. Well, I think I may have just enough time to put this together, so we'll have something for every step. So, this is kind of the first pass at this particular lecture for me, but the thoughts that are in here, some of them I've used a little bit in the class, and the class will notice that. But mostly, it's a new composition of some things. So, the title is "The Lives of the Saints: A Canon of Christian Orthodoxy." I'd like to explain that a little bit, so you can have an idea of what I'm talking about. By, I'll split it with three words: orthodox, christian, and canon. By orthodox, we mean right belief. Used in terms of doctrine, right belief of doctrine. The orthodox churches, for example, they consider themselves to be those that have the right belief. Well, we think maybe they're the closest that we would want them, then here too. But right belief is what orthodox means. Christian is used, here's an adjective, to state that the right belief that we're talking about is that positive faith, which was delivered once for all to the saints, or to Saint Jude in his letter. And then we have canon. This is canon with the one end in the middle, not two ends. Two ends in the middle, you've got a weapon, we're talking about a rule, a canonist's rule. If you remember the Code of Canon Law, for example, it's a book of canons, lots of canons. So, with that in mind, these definitions in place, the thesis implied by the title is this: "The lives of the saints provide us with a visible standard for knowing the authentic meaning of divine revelation, the sacred scripture, sacred tradition, in terms of both doctrine and the application of doctrine, in all minutia of everyday given law." We're going to begin with an observation about living things. Dusty, would you be able to get some water? Get that, because as soon as I start talking, you'll something to drink. In the material world that surrounds us, there's a principle, principle of growth for all living things. This principle, the principle is this: apart from an inherent defect, the conditions for growth are present, and living things grow, and they grow to a state of maturity. Thank you, Dusty. They grow to a state of maturity unless something impedes their growth. When we see that something has a growing maturity, we think there's something wrong. That's fairly obvious to us. We try to correct it if we can. Now, the soul is a living thing. Soul is the life force of the body. The body has life because of the soul, not the other way around. The soul doesn't get life from the body, the body gets life from the soul. So, the soul is a living thing, and the soul also should grow because it is a living thing. In the case of the soul, that growth takes place primarily in the intellect and the will. The product of intellect's growth is sanity, or wisdom, and the product of will's growth is sanctity, holiness. But since maturity is the proper state of living things, we should expect the soul of every human person to grow to perfection, to completeness. Given the proper conditions, where we read in Matthew's Gospel, Matthew 5:48, "You therefore must be perfect, for as your heavenly Father is perfect." So, this raises a question. In regard to the soul, what is perfection? The parable of the sower is a good place to start, to look for an answer to the question. Are you familiar with the parable of the sower, I'm sure? It angles out, you associate it, links it four different places. And so, if I could read the passage itself to you, if I could read the parable itself, and you'll read a couple of things from the explanation that are found in Luke and Mark's Gospel. So, the seed is the word of God. The ones along the footpath are the ones who have heard the word of God, but then the devil comes and takes away the word from their hearts, that they may not believe and be saved. The ones on the rock are those who, when they hear the word, receive it with joy, but having no regret, they believe for a while. In time of temptation, they fall away. Then we have the seed that falls on the moment of thorns. They are those who hear, but as they go on their way, they are choked by the cares and riches and pleasures of life, and they do not mature. But those that were sown upon good soil are those who hear the word of God, accepted and bear fruit thirty, sixty, and a hundredfold. And most interested for tonight's topic in these last two cases, the seed that fell on thorns that did not mature, and the seed that fell on good soil that did mature and bore fruit thirty, sixty, and a hundredfold. To consider a, if you can draw from this parable, there's others, of course, but I've got two here that I was thinking about. First of all, not all souls grow to maturity, because there are things that can impede their growth, the worries, the cares, and pleasures of life. And second, of those that grow to maturity, not all produce fruit to the same degree. We have thirty, sixty, and a hundredfold. Now, despite that, thirty, sixty, and a hundredfold, thirtyfold is rather remarkable, if you think about it. You get maybe used to having, we hear this, this parable often enough, and we see this in nature, you know. I may be able to, I may be able to treat my front yard, how many thousands of seeds does it produce every year? And other trees in the same thing. We just see this all over, God's apocalyptic, in terms of the things He's given us in nature. So, thirtyfold is really remarkable growth when you think in terms of, like, the stock market. If you could get 10% growth in the stock market, you're really happy with that. That's pretty good. Well, that's one three-hundredth of the thirtyfold. So, that's a very small number compared to what we're talking about in the Gospel. So, it's a good reference, that chasm there between the fruit that didn't mature, of course, the fruit that doesn't mature doesn't produce any fruit. It has to mature in order to produce fruit. So, there's a big gap between the seed that produced thirty, sixty, and a hundredfold, and the seed that fell on the thorns. So, the parables speak of remarkable growth, and speaks of the great potential for the spiritual growth of the soul, the growth of the intellect, and growth of will, by Harold. We find some examples of this kind of growth in the lives of the saints. We find lots of examples, actually. I'm going to give you a few examples from the life of Saint Dominic Savoie. Has anyone heard of Saint Dominic Savoie? Yeah, I'm expecting that. Somebody has? I saw the head on, but anybody else? You heard the name of these people? He was an Italian boy who died in 1857, a month before he turned 50. I've got just a couple of examples from his life that I'm not at all claiming are extraordinary virtue, but they do say something about him, about someone who's on his way to saintfulness at a very young age. When he made his first communion at 87, he made four resolutions. One of those resolutions was to prefer death rather than sin. He was not going to commit a mortal sin. He would die first. He's seven years old saying this. Most of us have concreted such a statement, but not a bad idea to make. When he was 13, he worked out an arrangement with another devout boy his age to be on watch for each other's faults, so each other would point out their faults. So, one saw, I have a little bit of patience here, Dominic wanted to know if he was doing bad, the other one wanted to know also, we're both going to grow in holiness. One weed out the faults of their souls. Again, this is something that most people probably do, based on my experience anyway. Once two classmates, both of whom were friendly with Dominic, but were mortal enemies of each other, agreed to a duel. A duel with rocks, two young music guys. A duel with rocks. They were going to stand 20 yards apart, throw rocks at each other until one of them either was dead or left. Dominic, like I said, was friends with both of them. He tried to talk them out of duel. They wouldn't have any of that. They were, again, mortal enemies. But he did get them to agree to a condition. The condition was this, that they would, the condition that they agreed to was that he would tell them when the first rock would be thrown. Okay? So, the night comes for the duel, they're out there, they got the stones piled up at their feet, they're ready to go. Dominic gets in the middle between them, puts a crucifix, and says, "The condition is this: you have to throw the first rock at me." Well, they both really liked Dominic. They couldn't throw the rock. And so, they wound up making peace with them, with each other, and the duel was over before the game started. So, yeah, he's 13 years old when this went off. So, that's pretty good for a 13-year-old. Now, these are really just small samples of the many ways Dominic made use of the graces that he received. Did greater works than these. In doing so, he eventually produced the thirty, sixty, and a hundredfold that the parable of the sower tells us about. One more thing from Dominic's life. When he was five years old, his father invited a man over for supper. Dominic's family was very poor. I think it was a blacksmith, I don't know. I think his dad was a blacksmith. And he invited another, well, one of his business acquaintances over for supper. The man sat down, well, they sat down, they ate, and the man started eating immediately, without saying prayer before the meal. They didn't have a chance to start their usual prayer before he could start eating. He took over and started eating. Dominic, again, he's five years old, he left the table, went off to his room, and was not going to be at the same table with the man who thought so little of God. That's an action of a five-year-old Dominic. So, obviously, there's some good things. Now, you might be thinking, well, at five years old, if you had children, he's a five-year-old child, right? And I think a whole lot about holy things and how to have a good life. If they'd been taught what they liked, but this was a little bit uncommon. And considering such actions from a young person, it might include a topic and all of the saints. We're given a special grace that's reserved for a few chosen souls. Such is not the case. Father Bay, Father Thomas Bay, theologian who read a wide breadth of the life of the saints, writes this: "It may surprise some readers that I advertly to the fact that the saints, barring Mary, the mother of God, are as naturally weak as we all are." They don't start out with any special gifts, except in some special cases. Virgin Mary, obviously, was given special graces. She needed that, so she would make prior decisions on her foundation. And you see in some saints, for example, Catherine Sienna, at a very early age, I believe she was seven years old, and she bade perpetual virginity. Teresa Vava also had some very extraordinary gifts seen at an early age. And you see this among some saints. But that's nothing nor. And he, Dominic Savoie, he had a situation of anger that he had to overcome himself. Tendency towards anger, he had overcome that, or he'd become saintly. Saint Francis de Sales is known as the gentle saint. He too had overcome some strong inclinations to anger in his youth. Of course, Mary Magdalene and Augustine of Pippour, two classic examples of two people who obviously were not saints early on. Augustine, you probably read about Augustine, his life, his promiscuous life until he was about 30 years old, and he was even so hesitant to really have a conversion, that he prayed that God would convert him and make him chase, but not quite yet. He wanted to enjoy his pleasures first. But of course, once he made the switch and decided he's really going to serve God all the way, it's like a ninth day, he began to produce thirty, sixty, and a hundredfold. Teresa Plissou, another favorite saint of many people, when she was near the 14, she wrote about when she was near the 14, and she says to herself, "I was really unbearable because of my extreme touchiness," that is, the tendency to cry like a magdalene, she would say, "over little unintended oversights." She says, "I was quite unable to correct this terrible fault." So, again, we do know, they're not doing a good service to the saints by saying, "Well, they have received a special grace, and they're just God's chosen ones, and that's great." Well, we're all God's chosen ones. He's called all of us. He's called all of us to saintly. And we speak about some of that as we go along here, though that's not the major thrust of the talk. So, what do we see in the lives of the saints? The lives of the saints are nothing less than fascinating in terms of the things they do. These are all virtuous actions, actions of heroic virtue. Anyone who's read the definitive biography of any particular saint will see this. If you haven't done this, I encourage you to do this. Buy a real good, authentic biography of a saint and read it. There are many books on saints that are worth reading. They need to be written by somebody who understands his spiritual life and has really done his research on the saints. For example, there's a great book on the Cray of R, Saint John Vianney, written by Father Tocque, excellent, well researched, and he knew what he was writing about. He knew what Sataness, he knew what to look for in holiness, so that he could write his book and see these saints in life of John Vianney. And that book has just hundreds, literally hundreds and hundreds of various instances from his life that are just nothing less than fascinating. You can read just about any book on Mother Teresa, now Saint Teresa. And again, it's the same sort of thing. You see these marvelous things all throughout her life, even when she was a child, doing some very good things, especially once she went to Calcutta and became the mother of war, so to speak. Marvelous things. They're just fascinating books. Even people who are hostile to the Church can see this. Mark Twain, for example. If you don't know Mark Twain, he was, I'm sure you've heard of Mark Twain, but Mark Twain was anti-Catholic. By his own admission, he was anti-Catholic. He mentioned this in one of his books. Despite that, despite being a self-declared anti-Catholic, he wrote an excellent book about Saint Joan of Arc, and referred to her as the greatest woman who ever lived. That was a little bit awful of Mark there. He did certainly, this should take place of, plus Virgin Mary, and maybe some other saints. But nevertheless, he said of this book, he didn't do any research for any of his other books. He spent 10 years researching the life of Joan of Arc to write that book. So, if an anti-Catholic can find something so remarkable in the life of a saint, that says something to us in terms of trying to get a little bit more familiar with the saints that we just honored yesterday. Along similar lines, Robert Bolt, a self-professed atheist, was so fascinated by the life of Saint Thomas More, who was the Chancellor of England back in the 1500s, that he wrote a play, a play called Man for All Seasons. Maybe you've heard of it, and maybe you've seen it. How's seen it? It's seen, I thought. So, it's really a treat. You should sit, get a copy of it, sit down and watch it. It's really a treat. Again, it's done by Hollywood. It's not the perfect biography of Saint Thomas More, but it has a lot of very good traits that do stand out. There's certainly traits of a man of holiness. So, Robert Bolt, he didn't know everything to look for being an atheist, but he found some pretty good things. He was especially interested in the conscience issue that was the reason for Saint Thomas More not wanting to sign the over, which led him to his death in prison in the Tower of London, and eventually had his head cut off. In order to establish in the lives of the saints, we need to look at virtue. So, we take a moment, look at natural virtue and supernatural virtue. It's part of the standard equipment of human nature to have natural virtue. Natural virtue is ordered to helping us to meet the natural needs of ourselves and the needs of our neighbor. These natural virtues can be used to accomplish great deeds, great things in the natural order, for those who train themselves in natural virtue. We say that in government, business, athletics, you know, athletic, Olympic athletes, the things that they go through to train, well, they're using natural virtue to do that. And again, you see this in various places. People that stand out in these various fields and another field, they're just simply fields in the natural order, they really make good use of those natural virtues. However, the natural virtues are not sources of supernatural merit. What we're really interested in is salvation, and to obtain salvation, we must obtain supernatural merit. The reason why the natural virtues aren't a source of supernatural merit is because they're a means and they're an, as a means and an, they're both rooted in creation. Saint Paul says of this, "If I speak in the tongues of men and of angels, but have not love, I am a noisy gonger; I need symbol. If I have prophetic powers and understand all mysteries and all knowledge, if I have all faith, so as to move mountains, but not have love, I am nothing. I give away all I have. If I deliver my body to be burned, but have not love, I gain nothing." So, without the virtue of charity, these natural virtues simply don't take us anywhere in terms of the supernatural order. So, let's look at supernatural virtue. Supernatural virtue is that which does obtain for us supernatural merit, obtains merit for us because it's carried out in union within this to a body of Christ. Supernatural virtue can be exercised at various degrees, depending on the type of act and the motivation for the act. Obviously, someone who's very patiently with an annoying fly is not exercising virtue of patience to the same degree of someone who is patiently being martyred. There's obviously degrees in terms of what the situation calls for. On one end of the scale of supernatural virtue, we have ordinary virtue. Ordinary virtue is what we see in a typical man or woman who stands out to lead a good life. And such virtuous acts are common. On the other end of the scale, we have what's called heroic virtue. Heroic virtue is notably uncommon. Ordinary virtue is certainly a good thing, but we're not called to merely good things. We're not called to be merely good. Consider again Matthew 5:48, "You therefore must be perfect," again, which means complete, not aiming us for some ideal, means completeness. "You must be perfect, as your heavenly Father is perfect." Examples of what this means are abundant. Now, okay, back up just a moment. I actually didn't even skip over something here. Let me just move on to the next point, because I actually covered this, talked about natural virtue. Let's look at some definitions of heroic virtue. Heroic virtue is not merely a matter of keeping the Ten Commandments. Luke 17:10 tells us, "When you have done all that you've been commanded to do, say that we are useless servants. You've done little more than our duty." Heroic virtue, rather, is a lip expression of the Ten Commandments, but sometimes it's sort of the perspective of the vianities. Now, you probably went to mass yesterday, or the day before the evening, and do you remember what the Gospel was, by any chance?
Matthew 5.
Yeah. It was about the vianities. Now, in coincidence, that on All Saints' Day, we have a Gospel that emphasizes the vianities. Because in the vianities, we have the perfection of the Ten Commandments, the Ten Commandments being lived out in human life. Some people say that the vianities are just set out there as a lofty ideal, and we should, you know, try to work towards them, but it's just an ideal. But no, Scripture doesn't say that, and the saints don't show us that. The saints show us that these are things to be lived out in a concrete reality. Heroic virtues and cons are already said. Father Bay says of that, "That most people strongly resist growing from ordinary to heroic sanctity." So, he's not just saying that most people don't do that, he's saying most people strongly resist. That's kind of remarkable. Let me come back to that point in just a little bit here. But what is heroic virtue? Father John Barton, a saintly man himself, a Jesuit priest, a very good Jesuit, defines it like this. He says, "The performance of extraordinary virtuous actions with readiness and over a period of time is what heroic virtue consists of." He says, "The moral virtues are exercised with ease, while faith, hope, and charity are practiced to an eminent degree." So, teaching the moral virtue, especially prudence, justice, temperance, and fortitude, the four cardinal virtues, but all the moral, you know, all the other virtues that aren't theological virtues of faith, hope, and charity are classified as moral virtues. So, it's that whole gamut of virtues out there. And most people says about the vianities, "The moral virtues are exercised with ease." It's not the case for the average Christian. To this definition, Father Bay adds, "Heroism and holiness," that is heroic sanctity, "is itself a moral miracle impossible to unaided human nature." So, heroic virtue we're talking about, this is the virtue of finding the saints, "It is impossible to unaided human nature." It's a key point that I'd like to keep in mind as we go through this, and we'll come back to it. He goes on to say that if anyone questions whether or not it's really impossible, he says, "Anyone who knows well both himself and heroic virtue knows this fact." If you've read the life of the saints, then you'll see what we're talking about here in terms of heroic virtue. And I've got a few examples later on. A person living in a state of heroic virtue is free of mortal sin, for sure, free of venial sin, for sure, and free of imperfections, which aren't sins, but there are tendencies to do certain things that aren't good, free of imperfections. And in addition to that, they're free of the disordered inclinations of emotions. So, that's a superior freedom he's talking about. Pope Benedict XIV wrote about, he's, one of the things, one of the main things that he did, he's a scholar, one of the main things he did is he formalized a canonization process for saints. And then he writes this about the saints and heroic virtue. He says, "In order to be heroic, a Christian virtue must enable its owner to perform virtuous actions with uncommon compitute, ease, and pleasure, from supernatural motives, and without human reasoning and self-abrogation, and full control over his natural inclinations. And heroic virtue, then, is a habit of good conduct that has become second nature to us. It's a new motive power, stronger than all corresponding inborn inclinations, capable of rendering easy a series of tasks, each of which for the ordinary man would be set with very great difficulties." So, this last sentence, I think, is very important. Makes the person who possesses heroic virtue capable of rendering easy a series of acts, I'm just saying a lack, a series of acts, which for the ordinary man would be set with very great difficulties. Okay, so why the resistance to heroic virtue? Well, the resistance is found in the virtue of charity. I'll explain that in a moment. It might sound kind of odd, but I'll explain in a moment here. Vatican II spoke of the perfection of charity, the document Luminensium. It's the document which all the faithful were called to life and holiness. According to that document, it's Luminensium number 40, the Second Vatican Council taught that all the faithful in Christ, faithful of Christ, of whatever rank or status, are called to the fullness of the Christian life and to the perfection of charity. The phrase perfection of charity is another way of saying heroic virtue. The two are synonymous. In order to get an understanding of the phrase, we need to examine the theological virtue of charity. Now, charity and love, if we're understanding correctly, charity and love have the same meaning. That's if we're talking about the theological virtues. So, when we speak of love in the gospel sense of the word, we are speaking of the virtue of charity, the theological virtue of charity, to the greatest of virtues. Paul writes in the First Corinthians, "So, faith, hope, and love, charity abide. These three, but the greatest of these is love." There's a problem with the use of these two words, love and charity. For the meanings of these words, as used in the Gospel, have become overshadowed and confused with other meanings for these words. The word charity has come to be popularly understood as meaning the giving of assistance to the poor. Giving assistance to the poor is a good thing, of course, but the popular meaning, this popular meaning of charity doesn't include concern for the poor. Well, it may or may not be concerning for the poor, but if you say you despise the poor, you give them money, people are going to say, "Oh, it's an act of charity." Well, no, it's not. It's giving money to the poor, but it's not the theological virtue of charity, something quite different than that. So, giving assistance to the poor isn't necessarily an act of charity in the gospel sense of the word. But that's an issue with the word charity. The word love has an issue, a couple of issues. It's taken on sentimental meanings, having nothing to do with the virtue of charity. It's commonly understood to be an emotional thing, a matter of feelings, and it's completely incorrect. In the gospel sense of the word, love is an act of the will rather than an emotional thing. An act of the will are necessarily unfelt. There can be no emotion connected with an act of the will. You do not feel acts of the will. Now, it is possible for an act of the will, because as one carries out that act, one might be moved in some way based on what they're doing, what they're seeing, and so on. There could be an overflow of emotions as a result of that, but that's something aside from the act of the will. It's an emotional component that has nothing to do with the free act of the will. One other thing, the word love is also popularly understood to include within its range of meanings, acts such as fornication, adultery, and sodomy, the latter of which is one of the four sins that cry to heaven for vengeance. So, obviously, there's some problem with understanding these words correctly. So, what is this love that's known as charity? Perhaps the question is most easily answered by first asking, what is the opposite of love? So, if I ask you what the opposite of love is, what would you say?
Indifference.
Indifference?
Hate.
Hate?
Use.
Use.
Yeah, same term, I think, same term, I'll say that, but it's...
Hate is the word I'm looking for. Hate is the word I'm looking for. Yes, there's certainly all these things kind of fit there. Hate is the word I'm looking for. That's what people normally say, that the opposite of love is hate. But it's not, because hate is an unwilling emotional slash physical response to some sensual stimuli. That's what hate is. If you don't like, I don't like broccoli, but I like a satiety broccoli. Why do I hate it? Broccoli's never done anything to hurt me, right? It just doesn't taste good. So my hatred for broccoli is, like, it's not like it tastes. It's purely a sensual thing. It has nothing to do with the will or the intellect, okay? And I'm sure you can all think of things that you hate, whether it's food, or some drink, or whatever. There's always something out there that you hate. And you recognize, if you think about it, that hatred, it really comes from, whites don't like it. It's emotional. It's a reaction to senses or something. Hate is the opposite of life, which is also an will. So if you like some food, chocolate perhaps, not that's food, but chocolate, or a steak, or chicken, you know, whatever it is, if you like those things, why do you like them? Because they taste good, they feel good. These are all emotional things, things that come from the senses. These are not things that come from the like or the will. I'm not saying the bad things, they're just not, they're not a matter of love. People say, "Oh, I love pizza." Well, not really. You have an emotional attraction to pizza, you like pizza. There's a difference. We're talking about theological things, at least, we must be precise in understanding these words. So the opposite of love, not being hate, we need another, another word for, compound word for, the opposite of love, and that word is self-love. Self-love is the opposite of love. Self-love consists of acts of the will that are motivated by self-interest and thus exclusive...
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get what you said. The opposite of love is what?
Self-love. Love itself.
Okay.
To the exclusion of God and me.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Love, as you will see, is outward directed. It's a matter of self-giving, hence it always involves some loss. Love is going out to someone else, doing something for God, doing something for a neighbor. It's always outward directed. It's not directed at the person himself, it's directed outward from him. That being the case, since it's an act of self-giving, then it means there must always be some loss associated with the act of love. We lose something if we gain something also spiritually. But we lose something with every act of love. We lose maybe some comfort. "I was comfortable sitting over here, but somebody needed some help over there, so I wouldn't help them." Well, I'm not as comfortable as I was, had to go outside in the cold and do that, but I did some good thing. So there's a loss, you lose some comfort, you lose some time, you might lose some resources because you've given money to the poor, because you've concerned about the poor, and so on. So to experience loss is always to experience suffering, because the very definition of suffering is the loss of some good thing. It follows that necessarily that one who suffers, that one, I'm sorry, it follows that one who loves necessarily suffers due to that which is lost in self-giving. See, Teresa states, carries this a little further, she states that charity is proportional to suffer. Teresa Vought later, she says, "Whoever loves Him much, Him being God; whoever loves Him much will be able to suffer much, for God; whoever loves Him little will be capable of little suffering." Hey, I didn't read that very well. It's kind of an awkward phrase, let me go through it again. "Whoever loves Him much will be able to suffer much, for God; whoever loves Him little will be capable of little suffering. I hope myself that the measure of being able to bear a large or small cross is love." And Father Bae writes, putting up, Teresa also, "Love is the measure of our ability to suffer." So I asked before, the question was raised, is why is it this great resistance to heroic virtue? Because the practice of heroic virtue requires the virtue of charity, which always involves suffering, and we just don't like the suffering. It doesn't feel good. Now, there's great benefits from moving in the direction of heroic virtue. One of the greatest benefits is the joy, for personal benefit, is the joy that we receive from being there, but there's a lot of suffering to go through before we get to that state where we really experience that joy and will experience. So having considered the true meaning of the virtue of charity, we're ready to take a closer look at the perfection of charity, this heroic virtue. Father Bae has a book, Saints: A Closer Look, very, a book that's very much well worth reading, easy read, nothing technical at all.
What is it? I'm sorry.
It's called Saints: A Closer Look. Father Thomas Bae. Excellent, excellent book. Very simple, I mean, it's an easy read, very attractive, he has profound new things it says. He's studied the lives of saints, you know, throughout his life, and he has a lot to say about, about the saints, about how they live their lives, how they get to the point where they are saintly people, what it means to us, and so on. So if you're interested in the topic, I hope everybody would be, I would suggest you get that book, depending on reading this. Christmas is soon coming up soon, so maybe you'll drop some hints. Anyway, he lists, there are nine traits of heroic virtue. So let's go through those traits, to try to give you a picture of what heroic virtue is. The first trait, saying yes to God. "This is a yes that is a ready, eager, and loving acceptance of whatever God asks, combined with a complete trust that He will provide whatever is necessary to accomplish what He has asked." I have an example, many examples. I'd like to draw something from Scripture for all these traits. So this one is from Luke 1:38, the time of the enunciation, and Mary said, "Behold, I am the handmaid of the Lord; let it be done to me according to your word." Did she know what she was getting into? She couldn't possibly have known all that. She was getting into, well, a really interesting situation here. And that not just mean the conception and work with Jesus, but his entire life and living with him and suffering with him at the cross. She obviously suffered more than any of the rest of us. She couldn't have known all that in the moment that she made that choice. But the saints recognized the call of God and responded immediately. There's no, no hesitancy in their yes. The second trait is a deep love for the Church. This love is expressed by one's loving embrace of the Church's teachings, by one's confidence in the promises Jesus made for the Church, universality, for example, ineffectibility, invalidability, the Church as being the source of grace for the sacraments. From Ephesians 5:25-26, "Jesus loved the Church and gave His life for her." Jesus loved the Church, everyone who was saintly would certainly follow His example. A third trait is prompt action. "The saints know nothing of procrastination; their motto could be said to be, 'Behold, now is the acceptable time.'" Right after the enunciation, Luke 1:39, "In those days Mary arose and went with haste into the hill country to a city of Judah." Rather than usual, if you think about it, see, you know, they tend to say this is probably a young girl, maybe fourteen, fifteen years old, I don't know, I won't be sure, of course. But at any rate, the distance that she had to travel, and the path that she had to travel to get down to Judah was a pretty good distance, I think it was maybe fifty, sixty miles, I'm not sure about the geography, but it's a good distance. Considering you're either going to walk or ride on a donkey for that distance. And not only is it a good distance, but it's a dangerous, dangerous path to travel, because plenty of robbers and bandits out there to attack people if you weren't a carer. Even if you were a carer, perhaps, you're exposed to some of those dangers. But knowing that Elizabeth, who was now with child, six months along, and she made hell, the saint gets up and goes immediately. A fourth trait is perfection. "The virtues are practiced to a high degree of excellence, without mixed motives, and with a much greater intensity than what is found in ordinary virtue." Take Luke 10:27, the Great Commandment, "And Jesus answered, 'You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind, and with all your strength, in your name, as yourself.'" A fifth trait, conventional response. Heroic virtue doesn't wax and wane. One living at the level of heroic virtue responds to all situations in the manner of heroic virtue. In ordinary, ordinary lives, on some days, we feel like, yeah, I could really use some good purchase of things today, maybe the next day, yeah, not so much the next day. Spend all day watching football or garden shows or something, and just sit around. Waxing and waning, you read The Life of the Saints, you'll see this, this intensity of the spiritual life, moment to moment to moment, throughout the day, day after day, and so on. The sixth trait is heroism under fire. "The difficulty of the given situation doesn't diminish the degree to which heroic virtue is practiced." I chose Acts 7:60 for this. This is at the martyrdom of Saint Stephen. Saint Stephen being stoned to death here, and before he dies, he says, or Luke says a human act, "And Stephen knelt down and cried with a loud voice, 'Lord, do not hold this sin against them.'" The situation does get much tougher than being on the wrong end of a bunch of stones being thrown. The practice of seemingly opposite, opposite virtues. Heroically virtuous people balance their necessary activities with their need for prayer, their love for family and friends with moderation in time spent with them, their need for food and drink with an avoidance of indulging in such pleasures. Perhaps a classic Scripture verse for this is Luke 10:42, the martyr of Mary account. I don't remember how that goes, and Jesus sums things up by saying, "One thing is necessary; Mary has chosen the better part, and will not be deprived..." She would not be deprived of it. And the ninth, last trait, and perhaps the best of these nine traits, is abiding joy. "One living at the level of heroic virtue habitually exhibits a thoroughly remarkable joy, even in the midst of severe trials." Another example, in Acts of the Apostles. John and Peter had been called in by Sanhedra, they weren't, they weren't too pleased, the Sanhedra wasn't pleased with what they were teaching about Jesus and being raised from the dead, right there in Jerusalem. Of course, these guys had set a guard on the tomb, so that he couldn't get out of the tomb, and he did anyway. So anyhow, we read in Acts 5:43-41. "So they took Gamaliel's advice, because Gamaliel had suggested that, you know, if you, if you, if you fight against these guys, you need to be fighting against God himself." But Gamaliel was a pretty wise man, and they didn't take his advice, they sort of took his advice. They didn't want to put him in prison, but they said, "Well, we're going to flog him in England." So they took Gamaliel's advice, and when they had called in the apostles, they beat them, so they sort of took his advice, and charged them not to speak in the name, not to speak in the name of Jesus, and let them go. "Then they left the presence of the council, Peter and John, and his, rejoicing that they were counted worthy to suffer dishonored for the name of Jesus." So rejoicing their sufferings. It's a fighting joy, you'll see this again throughout the lives of the saints. Some people say that, well, saints are kind of hard to live with. True saints are not released, but hard to live with. True saints are joyful, cheerful, they're lovely people to be around, but they're serious about their work also, with the work of virtue. So if there's anything difficult about being in the presence of the saints, the difficulty is our lack of holiness and our lack of willing to be so devoted as the saints are. Couple more examples here from the lives of the saints and the practice of heroic virtue. "As a hard-working layman, judge, soldier, and husband, Saint Nicholas von Flue fasted four days a week, and the whole of them, of course, on a daily piece of bread or a few dried pears. His health did not suffer, nor did his long hours of contemplative prayer. Later, as a hermit, Nicholas ate nothing for years on end. Agents of the civil government for an entire month kept strict watch to make sure he received no food. The local bishop tested the saint once by asking him what virtue was most meritorious. And he replied obedience. He was bitten, eaten some bread soaked in blessed wine. He obeyed, at the cost of such agonies that he was never again asked to eat anything." Now, the fact that he didn't eat for years on end, that by itself is not heroic virtue. He got to the point where he really couldn't eat, as the still passage says. But it's an example, something marvelous was going on in his physical body, obviously, and that thing that was going on was a result of his practice of heroic virtue, his heroic life. This is actually not terribly uncommon among the saints. Catherine Chen was the same way. She got to a point, I think it was the last eight years of her life, she didn't eat. There's, it's not, it's not just those few saints, like I said, there's others, I'm recalling them right now, but it does happen. Another one. A note, Father Bae, these actually come from one of Father Bae's books, a book called Hathor Report, it's all about gospel poverty, the theme of poverty runs throughout the gospel, another book for reading, and easy to read. This next example comes, is about Saint Margaret Cuthbert. A married English convert, again, a layperson, obviously, as Nicholas von Flue was a layperson. "A married English convert, she was a beautiful woman, livy and cheerful. She fasted four days a week and spent an hour and a half in prayer each morning. She died a cheerful martyr in her thirties by being pressed to death for harboring priests and attending Mass." She died a cheerful martyr, a sad one. "Saint Hedwig, a married woman, wore a hair shirt and the same tunic and cloak, winter and summer. She walked to church barefooted over ice and snow, and in the case she met someone along the way, she carried her shoes for pastoral use." Her shoes would have given some comfort to her feet, so she carried them. She only wore them if she needed to hide her penance from other people. They don't, they don't make a show of the things that they do, they keep them out of "Saint John Baptist de La Salle, he had a naturally very delicate palate. To overcome this weakness, he deliberately starved himself until hunger enabled him to swallow any food, however coarse or delicate." So Father Bae says, "Don't get what's more radical than that, and the saints are radical people." "Saint Robert Bellman, he would not keep his possession of trifling things, such as a holy card, a holy picture, or blessed metal, except the one that was attached to his rosary." He said, "A poor man wouldn't have two holy cards." I think I've got dozens of holy cards, if any of them. Disperse them around somewhat. Along the lines of Saint Robert Bellman, once I was working to, I helped organize a retreat for our parish, and Father Bae was the retreat master, so we had him in our parish. This was all this back in the mid-nineties. And somebody who was going to create a brochure for the retreat asked me to get a picture of Father Bae, so I wrote to Father Bae and asked if we could have a picture of him. So we said, "We have a picture." And he said, "Please return it when you're finished with it, because it's the only picture I have." So very much so, along the line of Saint Robert Bellman in that respect. And it wasn't a very good picture, it's a picture of him standing in somebody's house in front of the refrigerator, black with a coat. He's probably had it for a long time. Well, now it's time to make sure we're in good shape here. So let's look at the process of canonization. Scripture speaks of the means by which we can determine if we are growing spiritually. In Matthew's Gospel read, "You will know them by their fruits," Matthew 7:16, "You will know them by their fruits." So that's the key to know if we're growing spiritually, it's the key to know if any person is growing spiritually, the fruits demonstrated. In his letter to the Galatians, Paul mentions nine of the fruits of the Holy Spirit. There's twelve in the Christian tradition, he mentions only nine from there. Now, in saying that we will know them by the fruits, Jesus points to a measuring rod of sorts that we can use to measure our spiritual life. According to the Catechism, "We pray as we live because we live as we pray. If we do not want to act habitually according to the Spirit of Christ, neither can we pray habitually in His name. The spiritual battle of the Christians' new life is inseparable from the battle of prayer." So briefly, in the Catholic Encyclopedia, you can find on New Advent, the old Catholic Encyclopedia, written early 1900, around 1910. It's on New Advent, it's a, actually, I mean, it's a full series of articles that you find in any encyclopedia, but it has many articles about Catholic things, as you would expect, and it's really an excellent, excellent resource. It's outdated in some things, of course, in some things, the Church has changed, it's only going to give you what it had in 1910, but it's still a very good, very good book. And there's a very nice article on canonization, the process, and the things related to canonization. So if you're interested in learning a little bit about how that's developed, you can go there. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the process over the years. In the ancient church, we have a classic example, this practice of public generation of the saints. In Saint... In Saint, not saint, in Eusebius's Church History, which was written roughly around three twenty, three thirty, early three hundreds. He talks about Saint Polycarp, who was martyred in the year 155. There was an annual festival for celebrating life of death, really martyrdom of Saint Polycarp. So way back to the earliest days of the Church. There's other accounts, this just happens, one of them is obviously very ancient, going back to the year 155. So already at that time, I haven't got anything to say that there was some other specific person whose death was celebrated prior to them. I would imagine Ignatius of Antioch, who falls in that category also, Saint Paul of Antioch, who died there roughly 110, 115, and so on. But anyway, we have very good historical evidence that Saint Polycarp, at least, was venerated as a saint in the very earliest days of the Church. We always have had the guides of bishops in this process of canonizing saints. It's only been permitted, the public veneration has only been permitted by the Episcopal authority, it's always been the case. Originally, it was imperative of the local bishop to declare a person worthy of veneration. Over the centuries, the privilege became successively restricted as a result of some abuses, because some abuses weren't quite as careful, and they could be bought, and could have bishops as well, as well as the rest of us. Finally, in 1634, Urban the Eighth published a book which preserved exclusively through the Holy Seed, the right of canonization. In the Church's early centuries, said permission was only given to those who had died as martyrs from the faith. But the permission was just, was not granted for just anyone who died as a martyr. There had to be a local cult, there had to be some evidence that there was really a life of heroic virtue that went with that martyrdom. In the fourth century, the process was expanded to include people called confessors. These were originally men who had been tortured, had not given into the torture, and later on, they survived the torture, and later on died of a natural death, virtuous death, and maintained a life of holiness throughout that time. Originally, the ranks of confessors only included those who had publicly confessed, as I just said. But later, it was expanded to include those who had simply lived a holy life and died in peace. And then eventually, the process of canonization was expanded to include just anyone who's demonstrated a life of heroic virtue. Again, if you read about Benedict XIV's writing on the canonization process, you'll see that it's a very well-defined, back in sixteen hundred, very well-defined process for who's gonna get canonized and who's gonna get canonized. So that's been going on for a long time. But I wouldn't want to think that the same process we have today is what's always been going on in the Church. It's not always been the saints. It's varied considerably throughout the years, but always, again, under Episcopal authority. The bishop of that local area would say, "If this person has practiced heroic virtue, he can be raised to the altars." That could only be, though, for that, for his dioceses, it didn't apply to any other dioceses. Now, he would share the writings of, the writings about this saint with other bishops, and if they chose, they would then extend it to their dioceses. But only the Pope could make it universal in the Church. All right, so we're ready now, kind of working towards Vienna, right, limited cross here. As I said, in the thesis statement here, "The lives of the saints provide us with a visible standard for knowing the authentic meaning of divine revelation, in terms of both doctrine and the application of the doctrine in the minutia of human life." Let's apply that to Revelation, think about Revelation for a moment. Divine revelation is the Word of God, it is the self-revelation of God. Paul writes, "In the word made flesh, the whole fullness of deity dwells bodily." Jesus, we have the whole fullness of deity. If man were to know the thoughts of God, he could only know them if they were revealed to him. For, as I said, it tells us, God says, "My thoughts are not your thoughts. My thoughts are not your thoughts." So the only way that we can know God's thoughts is if He reveals them to us. But even after it's been revealed, we still have a problem understanding what's actually been revealed. Gospels often speak of this difficulty in understanding revelation. It was common to the people at large, the apostles as well. This is clearly seen in the passage on the parable of the sower. After he had given his, spoken this parable, the crowd had now gone, and he's talking to the apostles and says, "This is why I speak to them, the crowds, in parables, because seeing they do not see, and hearing they do not hear, nor do they understand." But what were they hearing from him? They were hearing revelation, they were hearing the Word of God from him, and the crowds didn't understand. Did the apostles understand? Well, he says to the apostles, "Do you not understand this parable? How then will you understand all the parables?" There's this problem of understanding what's been revealed, even when Jesus is right there speaking to these people. They didn't necessarily understand what he was saying. Problem is that the wisdom of man does not provide a means for understanding God's self-revelation. For the wisdom of this world is falling with God, Paul tells us. Something beyond the wisdom of man is needed to understand what God has revealed. That something else is the Holy Spirit, whose problems to the apostles at the Last Supper. John 14:26, "But the counselor of the Holy Spirit, whom the Father will send in my name, he will teach you all things, and bring to remembrance all that I have said to you." So we know that the Holy Spirit will teach the apostles and their successors all that Jesus revealed to them. But when the apostles or their successors speak, how do we determine if what is being said comes from the Holy Spirit or from man? How do we know if it's the Word of God or the Word of man? Obviously, I'm speaking apart from the case of something that's proclaiming expatriation. The Pope is certainly fallible in making statements, but only when he declares it to be so. If you had two, two... There's two statements made by the Popes the last hundred years that are infallible statements, aside from the canonization of saints, some will call those infallible statements also. Kind of another topic, I would probably infallible statements, and Thomas Aquinas would do that. So we're pretty telltale thinking those are infallible statements. But formally defined doctrines, we've had the doctrine of the Assumption of Mary defined in nineteen fifty, and the doctrine of the Metaphenexception of Mary defined in eighteen fifty-eight, I believe. Of course, it's had a lot of other things during that time also. Well, in what they said, are they speaking clearly and harmoniously in Scripture, in every case? Maybe, maybe not, I'm not saying they aren't doing that, but how would you know? How would you know? And you wouldn't want to know, because if, you know, one Pope says one thing, you think, well, he's usually got it right, and another Pope says something different, you think, well, maybe he's got it right. If they're not, if they're toward agreeing on something, we need a way of discerning the difference. Eventually, the Church will work all this out, of course, but when those things happen, sometimes we need to know. So there must be a means of determining the source, whether the source of their teaching is God or something else. There must be a standard against which the authenticity of the teaching can be measured. Lacking such a standard, we're left in darkness as to the meaning of God's self-revelation. For a revelation that is darkness is really no revelation at all. A revelation that is darkness sows a seed of chaos, because it naturally engenders contradictory understandings, some of which are actually misunderstandings, and this leads to confusion and this is conflict. But Saint Paul writes in the Corinthians that "God is not a God of confusion, but of peace. Hence, it is incumbent for him to provide a standard by which the authentic interpretation of revelation can be separated from that which is in error, so as to avoid the inevitable confusion and conflict that would naturally follow from the unaided wisdom of man." Recognizing the need for a standard and for the understanding of revelation, we need to ask what this standard might look like, so as to be able to identify it and to apply it. I suggest to you that there is one such standard, and that standard is the lives of the saints. If so, the standard needs to be, needs to have some characteristics that we can use to identify it. Needs to possess four notes, the notes of authenticity, universality, recognizability, and understandability. So let's look at these four notes. The note of authenticity. The criteria here would be that the standard must contain within itself a sign of divine origin, so that we can know with certainty that this standard is from God. Do we have a satisfaction with the criteria? Well, we've already shown that heroic virtue is humanly impossible. Hence, the lives of the saints do possess that criteria, that note of authenticity. The note of universality. The criteria for that is that the standard must provide a harmonious understanding of virtue, fruits of the Holy Spirit, across the entire spectrum of virtue. It must be changeless throughout time, the Word of God is His own self-expression, and He is immutable. He can't change, His self-expression can't change. So it must be changeless throughout time, and it must be available to every nation, for the Gospel is to be preached to every nation. Do we have that criteria satisfied? Well, we have the process of canonization throughout the Church's history, which is a witness to the heroic virtue of the saints, that heroic virtue has been found in every nation, every age, every circumstance, every way of life, every vocation, and so on. Hence, the lives of the saints do possess the note of universality. The note of recognizability. The criteria for this is that the standard must be recognizable without difficulty, so as to eliminate any question of the existence of the standard. Is that satisfied? Well, Jesus said to us, "We will know them," authentic teachers, that is, "by their fruits." The fruits of the Holy Spirit, none of which are listed by Saint Paul, "when acted out to the degree of heroic virtue are exactly the fruits Jesus spoke of, and they are easily recognizable to the world, as we have seen with Mother Teresa and John Paul II, for example." We easily recognize that there's something going on there, the fruits of the Holy Spirit have been so visible to us through television, especially in the case of John Paul II, but also Mother Teresa. Everybody knows, seemingly, everybody knows of Mother Teresa. So the lives of the saints possess this note of recognizability as well. And our last note, the note of understandability. The criteria for this is that the standard must be in human, in quotes, "language", so as to compensate for the difficulty we have in understanding revelation. Is it satisfied? The language of human activity is not only easily seen, but also readily understood. It is the matter of acts of heroic virtue. Father Debatte writes, "Ordinarily decent men and women are attracted, moved, and at times melted by example by the deeds of sheer goodness and burning love that are found in these saints." Hence, the lives of the saints possess the note of understandability. So drawing this to a close, I have shown that throughout the history of the Church, we've had in our presence men and women who have lived the Gospel to the perfection of charity. This means their lives are marked with heroic virtue, which is the practice of a virtue to a degree that is humanly impossible. Such a life can only be lived through the extraordinary influence of the Holy Spirit. Lives of these holy men and women are inspired by the same Holy Spirit who inspired the Scripture. It follows that the saints are the best exegesis of sacred Scripture, in their writings, of course, but of special interest to us in their lives as well. Their lives are mirrors of the sacred word, and in this mirror, in this mirror, we have a pointer directly to, a pointer or an aid to understanding the Scriptures. It follows that the saints are the standard by which we have the authentic meaning of revelation, which can be seen by all in terms of formally defined doctrines, as well as in the minutia of everyday life. In the lives of the saints, we have the prophetic words of Saint James amply demonstrated, so that the Church can say with him, "Show me your faith, and I will show you the works that underline my faith." Would I conclude? If you have any questions, we're glad to probably address them.